While the meeting of the City Council is ordered for Monday evening, April the 27th, please stand as we pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, councilors. Councilors, before we begin, just a couple of things. I do want to indicate Counselor Stewart contacted me early this morning, it was about 7:00 PM, and indicated he would be unable to attend this evening because of his work schedule. However, he also wanted to make sure that we move forward on his proposed plan that he has before us and take the vote on that as appropriately. So, I wanted to let everybody know that. Second of all, councilors, and I don't think you have any objections to it, but our fire chief Francis is present this evening, and he asked, contacted me this afternoon, and wanted to say a few words to us this evening. I don't see any objections to that. So, at this time, I'm going to allow the fire chief to come forward and speak to us.
Good evening, councilors.
Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Chief.
No Michelle, no Jase, this is going to be an easy one.
It's going to be good.
So, good evening. My how time flies. Five short years ago, I was standing here as your new fire chief, and, you know, after a lot of soul searching, I took that appointment, and I came in with a clear plan of where we needed to go in the department and my vision of how we were going to get there. I have a picture in my office of the Blue Angels flying over the Rockies, and it has an inspirational quote underneath, and it simply stated, "It's amazing what can be accomplished when it doesn't matter who gets the credit." And that's what I based my five years as chief on. It became my motto. The command staff accomplished a lot of amazing things in the last five years because they in turn embraced that concept. We decentralized the authority down and allowed people to run with an idea or a project, a very simple formula. We allowed people to do their jobs while allowing talented firefighters to broaden their horizons and embrace new operational concepts. And in return, I got accountability top to bottom from both the officers and the rank-and-file firefighters. Majority of those projects done voluntarily at little or no overtime costs. People stepped up to the plate and were more than happy to see something that they envisioned get done. Few of the things that we did in that time, and like I say, it was a team effort, I was just the small, I was the guy that turned around and said we could spend a dollar or not. We overhauled the operational procedures throughout the department. We never accepted anything less than a dollar and a quarter in return for every dollar we spent. We found better and innovative ways to spend our limited funds. I negotiated the first ambulance contract that for the first time gave us more than coffee cups and pens. Through that contract, we got an enhanced computer aided dispatch system. This includes computers in all the trucks. We've actually come into the, we've come into the one-time technologically wise, all the trucks have computers now. They're able to see potential safety hazards before they get to a call. It's linked up with the police department. Hydrant locations, water main systems, there's a variety of things that are all in that computer that all they're going to do is hit a button and they come up with that information. I would have loved to have had that 37 years ago when I started. I think one of the big things during this past five years that we accomplished was through our partnerships with the police, the schools, IT, and to some lesser extent, Ray Ladue with Bat Bus and Beamer is, is through the partnerships that we created, we upgraded radio communications for both the police and the fire department at very little cost, a fraction of what we would have, we would have had to spend, working together. One of the benefits of this is unlike in years, earlier years, when you go to talk on a portable radio in a school building now, you don't have to go over the window and hang it outside till you can hear what's going on. You get a crystal clear reception. Different city departments working closely together. That was the first I saw in my 37 years as a city employee, was actually people working together and breaking down relationships. One of the other things that we got done was, I got a chief executive officer, he works out of the chief's office. He's my department CFO. He spends a lot of time with Jay, and we've been very successful with him. He has everything down to the penny. So, five years ago, when I was standing here, I spoke of some of the needs that we had, such as staffing apparatus and the conditions of our three older stations. Now, conversationally standing here, I just want to say that in those five years later, we still have those same problems. We've chipped away at them a little bit. I'm not laying blame on anybody. I mean, it is what it is, and funds are what they are, but we really need to have a serious conversation going forward on some of these issues. The staffing, we're down 24 firefighters and it's climbing. I mean, by the end of July, it'll probably be up to 30. This can only be filled by hiring or large amounts of overtime or shutting companies down. Four years ago, I notified the city of the aging apparatus and the need for replacing engines and two ladders in the coming years. As of this time, we replaced two engines through grants, and those trucks are now celebrating their third birthday. How time flies. Both the trucks we replaced were put in reserve status for occasional use when a truck broke down. The former engine two has been in continuous service, running in place at Tower One on the east side for the past 18 months. Luckily, the mechanic shop is next door, so it isn't too far to fix it every day. You know, we keep talking about the ladder trucks, and I know you all have pushed for funding for these various different ways of coming up, whether it's grants, leasing, bonding, whatever. But seriously, we're going to go into another winter with a 21-year-old ladder truck that's just limping by. And the stations, you know, when I came on in 1978, Station One was supposed to close. It was, it was, it was just a mess. 37 years later, we're still working out of it, and it doesn't look like it's going to change anytime soon. So, when did it become acceptable that a fire officer has to bring a bucket of wa, bring a bucket to his desk when it's raining out because the roofs are leaking all the time? When did it become acceptable to operate in cold, damp, mice-ridden stations? We got three very old, 130-year-old stations that need to be replaced in the coming years some way, somehow. They're going to have to do something. But with that, I want to thank you all for your support. I know at various times, you've always had an open ear for me and tried to help me in any way you can, and I fully appreciate that. I officially retire as your fire chief on May 9, 2015, after 37 years of faithful service to the city. It's been an honor and a privilege, and please give the incoming chief the same level of support. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. President.
Counselor Cruz.
If I may approach the rostrum.
Yes, you may, Counselor.
Chief, if you can go back up for a minute. I golf with the chief on Sundays, and I have to tell you that the language he uses isn't much like what he just used right there. Shouldn't be used on Sunday, but we won't go there. I have some, a presentation on behalf of the entire city council, but I know it's been a tough job for, you know, the chief came in after a long, long-serving chief, and it's not easy to follow somebody's footsteps and do, put his own imprint on the department, and I think he did a great job of doing that. It's been a pleasure working with you. It'll be more of a pleasure taking your money on Sundays, but we'll get to that later. And of course, back when he started 37 years ago, I think the most expensive part of a fire truck was the two horses that pulled it, wasn't it?
Yes.
But I'd like to read this now on behalf of the city council. City of Brockton, Massachusetts, official citation. Be it known that the Brockton City Council hereby extends its congratulations to Chief Richard Francis in recognition of his dedication and service to the citizens of Brockton and to the citizens of Brockton as a member of the Brockton Fire Department for 40 years and his retirement as chief of that department. And be it further known that the city council extends best wishes for continued success. That this citation be duly signed by the president of the council and attested to and a copy thereof transmitted by the clerk of the council. By Dennis Ian Eery, President of the council, Anthony Yesioli, Clerk of the council, and offered by Counselor Timothy Cruz, April 27, 2015. I thank you very much. I'm glad to, I'm sure that we recognize the person that stays home because for a firefighter or a police officer, the person who has to daily worry is a wonderful member of the class of 1974, which few of us are, the chief's wife, Mary. Go on up.
Thank you, Chief, for those 37 tremendous years. We definitely appreciate it. Thank you. Counselor Denaply, you had a con, well, Counselor Denaply, he had.
I'll yield to, to Counselors.
Chief Stedenski, I should say. Yes, you may, Counselor.
First of all, I'd like to commend the fire chief and thank him for going to community firefighting. I agree with you totally. Thank you very much. Secondly, we have a birthday today. Last year's president, Councilor Robert Sullivan, turned the magic 45 today.
25, he said, 25, right?
25, I'm sorry, 25.
Happy birthday, Counselor.
One quick one. I claim to be an only child, but that's a little bit of a lie when I say that. And I have a, what we call an Irish twin, and tomorrow morning, at 12:01 AM, my brother Charles, Chick, will be the same age as his former oldest member of the family. So, I'm wishing him a happy birthday also.
Happy birthday to Chick. Thank you. Counselor, Counselor Denaply.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Stand, please.
I forgot we're in the city council.
You know where you were, Counselor.
Chief, I just want to congratulate you. You and I spent some evenings together zoning board traffic for many, many years, and you've done an outstanding job, and I just want to wish you and your wife many, many happy years and enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Sullivan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to echo those sentiments, and I want to thank you, Chief, for your service to the city of Brockton. When you think of Chief Francis, you think of two things, public service and a true gentleman, and I mean that wholeheartedly. So, thank you and best of luck.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyway, Counselor Monahan.
Well, I got to say, I don't normally speak up too often, but it has been such a pleasure working with him, and whenever I brought him in to speak, it was for his knowledge, but it was also, you'd never know what he was going to say, and I loved it. Thanks again, Chief.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. And again, thank you, thank you, Chief, for your many, many years of service. We definitely appreciate it very much. Let's take a two-minute recess. Mr. Clerk, Madam Clerk, I should say.
We have the report of the Finance Committee for its meeting of April 21, 2015.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Assistant District Attorney stating that the city council did not violate the open meeting law. In reaching this determination, they reviewed the complaint filed with this council, the council's response, and the complaint filed with their office. They now consider this matter closed.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Treasurer Collector requesting a transfer of $275,000 from Treasurer's Debt Service to Treasurer Tax Collector Medicare Tax. This transfer is necessary to cover the expected shortfall due to budget cuts and unanticipated overtime due to remainder of the fiscal year.
Accepted and placed on file.
From the mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
From the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
From the DPW Commissioner requesting an appropriation of $304,632 awarded to the city of Brockton by Governor Charles Baker under the Winter Recovery Assistance Program for the purpose of patching potholes, cracking, and other surface defects, including paving projects, repair, and replacement of signage, guardrail, and storm grates, or road striping, or painting, and other approved projects. Further requesting that the order and authorization designate the DPW Commissioner to carry out the work to be performed under the conditions of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Standard Contract Form.
Accepted and placed on file.
From the mayor in accordance with Mass. General Law recommending an appropriation of $304,632 from available funds Winter Recovery Assistance Program to RAP Fund. This is a state award under the Chapter 90 formula for patching potholes, cracking, and other surface defects, including paving projects, repair, and replacement of signage, guardrail, and storm grates, or road striping, or painting, and other approved projects. Further requesting that the order and authorization designate the DPW Commissioner to carry out the work to be performed under the conditions of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Standard Contract Form. As the receipt of the award letter from the state was delayed, hereby requesting that this order be adopted under suspension of the rules to ensure the work is completed before June 30, 2015.
Accepted and placed on file.
From the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Order that the city council rescind Order 76 as adopted by the council on March 9, 2015, for the purpose of accepting and spending a $339,040 R.Smart growth incentive dividend for various planning purposes. Accordingly, requesting that the city council establish a revolving fund for the intended purpose in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half.
The question's on adoption by a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
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 Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stedenski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
The order is adopted.
Order that pursuant to the Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, the city council authorizes the establishment of a 40 R.Smart grant incentive revolving fund for said receipts from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for purposes of engaging professional consulting services to prepare a citywide comprehensive plan, downtown redevelopment plan, downtown district improvement plan, Campolo District Redevelopment Plan, and to help fund the management by the Brockton Redevelopment Authority of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Home Program. Expenditure from the revolving fund shall be under the direction of the Department of Planning and Economic Development and shall be limited to $350,000 in fiscal year 15.
The question's on adoption by a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stedenski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
The order is adopted.
Appropriation of $3,500 from National Association of County and City Health Officials, Department of Health and Human Services Grant Fund, the city of Brockton Board of Health. These grant monies are for the purpose of building the level of volunteers for the local medical reserve corps.
The question's on adoption by a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Denaply.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stedenski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
The order is adopted.
Appropriation of $1,015,440 from available funds Brockton's Chapter 90 apportionment for fiscal year 2015 to Highway Transportation Project Funds fiscal year 15, Chapter 90 projects, to provide additional funding for the purpose of the design and construction costs necessary for approved projects. This request is based on an increase in the Chapter 90 apportionment for fiscal year 15 from $2,030,878 to $3,46,318. Further requesting that the order and authorization designate the DPW Commissioner to carry out the work to be performed under the conditions of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Standard Contract.
The question's on adoption by a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stedenski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
The order is adopted.
Appropriation of $12,000 from Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, EOPSS Highway Safety Division, FY 2015 Traffic Enforcement Grant, to City of Brockton Police Department, EOPSS FY 15 Traffic Enforcement Grant Fund.
Question's on adoption by a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Denaply.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stedenski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
Transfer of $15,000 from Fire Department Ambulance Receipts to Fire Department Purchase of Services to be used for the payment to perform software support for the period of July 1, 2015 to June 30, 2016. This provides for support services to the computer-aided dispatching CAD program currently in use at fire alarm.
The question's on adoption by a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Denaply.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stedenski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
The order is adopted.
Transfer of $90,000 from Fire Department Ambulance Receipts to Fire Department Capital Projects for 911 Next Generation Mandated System Upgrade of the secondary PSAP for purchase of three fire alarm operator positions. This will allow for receipt of all transferred 911 calls from the soon-to-be-upgraded 911 generation system at the police station relating to fire and EMS incidents with all available necessary information.
Question's on adoption by a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Denaply.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stedenski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
The order is adopted.
Order that pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, the city council authorizes an amendment to the previously authorized fiscal year 2015 abandonment building revolving fund, allowing expenditures made on the authority and direction of the Brockton Building Commissioner to be increased from no more than $75,000 to no more than $250,000.
Question's on adoption by a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Denaply.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stedenski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
The order is adopted.
Order that the city council of the city of Brockton hereby approves and directs the holding of an election on May 12, 2015 for as residents to vote on whether to permit the operation of a gaming establishment at the site of the Brockton Fairgrounds, notwithstanding that a new positive determination of suitability may not be yet, may not have been issued to the Gaming and Entertainment LLC and its related qualifiers by the Massachusetts Gaming Commission by such date.
The question's on adoption by a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Denaply.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stedenski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
The order is adopted.
Order that the city of Brockton Government Study Committee is hereby established to be comprised of seven citizens of the city, three of whom are to be appointed by the mayor and four of whom are to be appointed by the city council president. Each committee member shall be a registered voter to the extent possible possesses expertise or knowledge relevant to the work of such Government Study Committee, GSC. The GSC is charged with exploring by whatever means it deems appropriate all aspects of local government, organization, and structure, the strengths and weaknesses in Brockton's current former government, and areas for improvement, alternative models of government, and recommend changes in such organization and structure, including but not limited to the terms of office, the method of selection of officials consistent with the needs of the city, and designated to achieve greater efficiency and effectiveness in the delivery of government services.
The question's on adoption by a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
No.
Denaply.
Yes.
Monahan.
No.
Rodriguez.
Nope.
Stedenski.
No.
Sullivan.
No.
Three in the affirmative, six in the negative.
The order fails.
Resolve that the director of the council on aging be invited to appear before a committee of this council to provide an update relative to the Brockton Council on Aging Population in the city of Brockton.
Question's on adoption by a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Denaply.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stedenski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Resolve that the mayor, chief of police, chief financial officer, and the city's building superintendent come before a committee to discuss the position of code enforcement, code enforcement office in conjunction with the police department, and provide the committee with an update on when its vital position will be reinstated and operational on a daily basis.
Question's on adoption by a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Denaply.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stedenski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
The order is adopted.
Resolve that the representative of Stonehill College be invited to appear before a committee of this council to review the relationship between the city and the college relative to provision of city services.
Question's on adoption by a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Denaply.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
No.
Stedenski.
Yes.
Seven in the affirmative, one in the negative.
The order is adopted.
Resolve that the city solicitor be invited to appear before a committee of this council to review the issue of compliance with Section 2-301 of the revised ordinances of the city of Brockton.
The question's on adoption by a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.[1662.53] Cruz.
Yes.
Denaply.
Yes.
Ioneiri.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stedinsky.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
The order is adopted.
Transfer of $275,000 from Treasurer's Debt Service to Treasurer Tax Collector Medicare Tax. This transfer is necessary to cover the expected shortfall through the remainder of the fiscal year due to cuts to the budget request and because of payroll and overtime costs which are higher than the Medicare tax budget anticipated.
Refer to Finance.
Appropriation of...
Mr. President. Counselor Denaply.
Mr. President, I'd like to move item number 25 under suspension of the rules to vote on it this evening, because we have a timeframe on this, and Mr. Condon is here to... If any of the counselors have any questions on this. This is the money that we're receiving under Chapter 90 from the governor.
Second. Motion's been made, and second, that we're going to suspend the rules this evening and act on it this evening. All in favor of that? Opposed? We are going to act on it. For us, we have to have the clerk read it.
Appropriation of $304,632 from available funds Winter Recovery Assistance Program, RAP to RAP Fund. This is a state award under the Chapter 90 formula for patching potholes, cracking, and other surface defects, including paving projects, repair and replacement of signage, guardrail, and storm grates, or road striping, or painting, and other approved projects. Further requesting that the order and authorization designate the DPW Commissioner to carry out the work to be performed under the conditions of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Standard Contract Form.
Thank you. Counselors, if there are any questions, but I think we touched base upon it somewhat even last week when Mr. Condon was before us in regards to this, when we voted to accept the other Chapter 90 monies to come before the city. So seeing no other questions, then I'm gonna ask...
I actually have one.
Counselor Barnes.
Sorry, thank you. Mr. Condon, I'm not sure if you even know this, but I know that last time, Mr. Rowley was asked if the list was finalized or if it was still kind of being compiled. Do you have any idea of that or how that would update?
Well, I think the question on the list of roads to be fixed was with respect to the regular Chapter 90 money. This particular award is for pothole repairs only. It has to be spent within the next 60 days by the end of this fiscal year.
Okay, that was all... The list was for all of it.
No, this is just for emergency repairs to potholes.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you for clarifying that.
Also, Counselor?
Thank you.
Any other... Counselor Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Condon, just a quick question for you, because in the opening page of this, of our agenda, it basically states that the city of Brockton is getting the funds from Governor Baker, but yet, is it coming from Governor Baker or is it coming from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts?
It's coming from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts pursuant to his program.
So if you look at item number six on the agenda, it basically says that it was awarded to the city of Brockton by the governor. So I just wanted to make sure that, you know, for the record, that it's coming from the Commonwealth and not the governor himself.
Yeah, there should have been an insert in there indicating it was Governor Baker's program awarded through the Commonwealth of Massachusetts through the State Highway Department.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? Seeing's done at this time. The question's on adoption by roll call vote. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Denaply.
Yes.
Ioneiri.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stedinsky.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
The order is adopted.
Mr. President, move for reconsideration in hopes it doesn't prevail.
Second. Motion's been made, and second, for reconsideration in hopes it does not prevail. All in favor of reconsideration? All opposed? Reconsideration fails.
The resolve that Congressman Lynch come before a committee of this council to give a Washington, D.C. update.
Counselors, that's going to be referred to Finance, and then Counselor Barnes will do her follow-up and let me know what particular date that that will happen, but the congressman